All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to get started. Good evening and welcome to the 2023 City of Renton City Council Candidates Business Forum, hosted by the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I am Diane Dobson. I'm the current CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I want to take a minute to thank our partners at the Renton Reporter and Sound Publishing, and a huge thank you to our friends at Carco Theater, especially Preston Glidden for your attention to detail and your support in this event. Tonight's questions will reflect the interest and concerns of the Renton business community. The speaking order of the candidates was determined by a random generator prior to the event. With the time that we have, the candidates will each have two minutes for their opening statement. On the end, they'll have one minute for their closing statement, and the response times for questions will vary and be explained as the questions progress. Each candidate will receive, or has received, a 60-second rebuttal or expansion card to use at their discretion. We could call this their phone-a-friend or their one lifeline. They only receive one of these cards. You can use this card for any of the questions asked, not just one asked of you or your fellow candidate, but of any of the candidates here. We'll be having a speed round, bonus submitted questions, business submitted questions, and a few questions to get to know the candidates better. Now, most importantly, I want to thank our candidates for taking your time, your talents, and your energy to participate in this process. We appreciate your service. Thank you to the audience for your attendance and in advance for your courtesy to the candidates. And as a general awareness, this is being recorded. So while the cameras will be focused on the candidates, there is opportunity for audience recording. So if you're somewhere you shouldn't be or with someone you shouldn't be with, you might want to move seats now. Candidates, once the question is read, we'll give you a minute to process, and your clock begins. And I say a minute, a moment to process, and your clock begins. Can you see our timekeepers at the top? We have a yellow card, which means you have 15 seconds of your time remaining, and a red card when your time has expired. I will be diligent and consistent with that red card. The floor will not collapse, but I will cut you off. So we're going to start with introductions, and we are going to start with the mayor's table in the center with our candidates for mayor. So in two minutes, tell us what we should know about who you are, why you're running for office, and what your priorities are once you are elected. Armando, I will start with you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank Diane Dobson in the chamber for putting this on, for the council members and for the public to be able to actually get to see everybody. And I want to thank everybody that's signed up for this fun election. So becoming an elected official is a lot of fun, and the journey there is something. So anyway, about myself, so my name's Armando Paboni, and it's my honor to be the mayor of the City of Renton for the last four years. Before that, I was on council for one and a half terms. Born and raised in Renton, went to Renton High School, proud graduate. Go Redhawks. We got a Redhawk in the house, okay? And in 1985, I opened a restaurant in downtown Renton called Armando's and operated for 30 years. We still have a second restaurant called The Melrose Grill. About 10 years ago, as a way to give back to the community that has supported me for so many years as a small business owner, I ran for city council. And that's kind of what brings me here, was kind of the love and passion for not only my city, but also the work that we've done. And I got really involved with where the city was heading and wanted to make sure that all of the future endeavors that Renton has for it continue in a positive direction. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I'm Kim Monroe, and I am a candidate for mayor. I live in Renton by choice. I wasn't born in Washington, but I moved here for a job, and when it came time for me to have my family, I did my due diligence, and Renton is the place that I chose to call home. We love it here, can't imagine being anywhere else. And both my children are proud graduates of Hazen High School, the second one just recently, and my first one is going into his fourth year at UW. I love this community. I'm proud to be part of it. I've done four years as PTSA president for Hazen High School. I've done a lot of volunteer work for such organizations like Planned Parenthood. And one of my proudest moments was being one of the founding members of the Renton Group for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We've been able to do a lot of good work together and meet a lot of good people. And I should point out, though, when we talk about guns, we are also a pro-to-A group. We're about gun safety. My biggest hot button is community safety. I would like to see my kids continue to go to school and to be able to work in a community where they feel safe and where they feel secure. Future-wise, I'm pretty much a team-type person. I'm not in, you know, the old adage, there's no I in team. Well, I sincerely believe that. I believe in bringing people together and also making sure there's a seat at a table for anyone who wants it. I'm a good listener, and I would be very, very proud to be your next mayor.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go in order of the races, and we're going to start with the table here, and Valerie O'Halloran for the seated position.
Thank you very kindly. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Valerie O'Halloran, and I am your current council president. Thank you so much for being here. I just want to say for those of you who don't know about me from prior to my council experience, I volunteered in this community for 25 years, including nine years on the executive board of the Renton Regional Community Foundation. And in my position here as council, I'm proud to have earned my certificate of municipal leadership and the advanced certificate of municipal leadership from the Association of Washington Cities. These certifications reflect my passion and my commitment to learning and being as knowledgeable and effective as your council member as I can possibly be. I have chaired the finance committee for two years. I am the only councilperson and candidate with over 30 years of financial experience. This is super important when you're charged with the collection, spending, and accounting for upwards of $300 million of taxpayers' money per year. Very, very important to have a background. My priorities are public safety and community health. I support our first responders, police, fire, aid, counselors, nurses, mental health providers. I believe in affordability and quality of life. I approve resources for housing, parks, senior center, recreation, and access to services. And I believe in sustainable and transparent budgeting, ensuring that we have the financial stability to provide you with the services you deserve. I love being in service on council. It's a very humbling and honoring experience. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Erica, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to stand a little bit if that's okay with everyone.
Perfect.
Good evening. My name is Erica Conway, and I am running for Renton City Council, position number three. I am a longtime resident of Renton. I graduated from Lindbergh High School. Go Eagles. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I also hold a bachelor degree in sociology with a minor in criminal justice. I am employed with King County Superior Court as a supervisor in the criminal department for the last 23 years. My decision to run stems from the challenges that I see, that I have seen in Renton, and it's very concerning to me. And I got to the point where I was like, Renton residents deserves so much more than the status quo. And so that was my decision to run. My priorities is public safety. I sit on the police chief community council because I want a seat at that table. I want to be able to foster a relationship between the community and the police department. Affordable housing is another concern that I have. Over 50% of the residents in Renton are renters. So we must collaborate with state and federal governments to be able to secure, I see, to be able to secure funding for those residents who would like to purchase affordable housing. And the other is the unhoused. And I know I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to say this real quick. I believe in Renton, and I believe it's time for a change, and that change is now, and that change starts with me. I need your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Ryan, you are next.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan McGurven. I use he/him pronouns, and I've had the pleasure of representing you on Renton City Council for the past eight years. During that time, I have focused largely on the issues of tackling growth. Of course, we had this little hiccup that came in 2020, you might all remember that, and we've responded effectively to that. We moved to Renton initially because we saw a lot of growth and opportunity here, and that has not changed. My wife Stephanie and two daughters, Molly and Lena, are here in the audience. We chose Renton because we knew this was going to be a great place to raise our family with a lot of economic opportunity. We knew we had a great school district. And honestly, I've been committed to this community since the day we moved here and was very, very excited when I had the opportunity to influence real change on council, although that comes really as a direction of you all. You all set our priorities. We can pick the things that we like and that we want to talk about. At the end of the day, you all focus and decide what matters and what is important to this community. Right now, that issue that we're hearing loud and clear from the community is public safety, and that's something that I want to make sure we continue to address so that people have that general feeling of safety in their community, in their homes. My family's been the victim of a violent crime since we've lived here, and that's unfortunate. I'm sure others have similar stories here, and we don't have anything if we don't have safety first. The other issues I ran on initially and am continuing to work on are around housing affordability and mobility and transportation. So we can't enjoy our community if we can't afford to live here and we don't have a way to get into our jobs or places of employment. Those are issues that I'm committed to continuing working on. And then finally, we have to grow responsibly and balance with our natural environment. We have a jewel of the Cedar River flowing into Lake Washington here, and we need to make sure that we protect that and that as we grow, we do so responsibly. Finally, and I may get a chance to touch on all these, I'm sure, through many of the questions we get here tonight, but finally, I do want to acknowledge the last item here that I really think is worth mentioning, and I want to say thanks to the chamber for hosting this. The only thing I want to add on that is I do wish the moderator had not maybe endorsed some of the candidates on the stage, but in full transparency disclosure, I think we need to put that out there. Thank you.
A very good evening for everyone. My name is Sanjeev Yunjan. I was born and raised in Nepal, a small country between China and India. My father used to run a small grocery store, and my mom was just a housewife. So I started to help my parents from the very early days, and after my school, I started as a school teacher and promoted to the vice principal after my bachelor's degree. So I left Nepal because of the civil war that took 40,000 lives just in a few years. So I went to Iraq and worked for US military as a civil contractor. So I worked there in a laundry department, and I was a supervisor and translator before making home here in Renton. So here in Renton, I live with my wife, Babita Shrestha, who's here today, my son, Subesh Yunjan, my mother-in-law, and my father-in-law. So besides, yeah, for work, I own a small restaurant since 2014. And beside owning a restaurant, I also volunteer to the Renton Fire Authority as a civil service commissioner, and I'm also a community leader. So basically, I'm running for the Renton City Council. I have been in, you know, doorbell over 9,000 houses, and there are many people, as my community member also came forward and said, you know, crime is going so high, and we all know that last few years, the crime has gone so high. So we all have to come together, and it's our elected officials. Number one job is to protect our community. That's why I'm running for the Renton City Council, and I thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed, we'll go with you next.
Thank you so much, Diane, and thank you for holding this forum tonight. Good evening, everybody. How you guys doing? My name is Ed Prince, and it's been my honor for the last 12 years to serve on the Renton City Council, representing you. I was born in Seattle, Washington, but I visited Renton frequently. My grandmother worked at the Boeing plant, so on the times where she'd get off ship, I'd come hang out with her. So I got to know Renton at an early age just from being with her as an Boeing employee. I moved to Renton with my wife in 2005, chaired the Renton School Bond and Levy Committee, was a planning commissioner. Someone likes bonds and levies out there. I think it's the school board director that's in the audience. Was a planning commissioner for two years, or planning commissioner for three years, served as chair for two of them. I'm a father. My kids attend Renton schools. My son plays a little league football in Renton. My daughter plays basketball in Renton. It's been my honor to serve you guys since 2012. In the copious free time that I have when I'm not serving the residents, I also volunteer to run youth football league. So when I pulled in and I saw all the kids out there practicing, I was almost like magnetically drawn to go see what they were doing. My goals on council have always been the same. I want to make sure that Renton residents feel safe. I want to make sure that we have a good quality of life, and I want to make sure that we have affordable housing. Those are the most important issues to me. Those are the important issues that I think that we'll hear a lot about tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. Marvin.
So thank you, and thank you to the Renton Chamber and all of you who've come out here tonight, and especially those who are watching us on YouTube. I know we're going to get replays on this very shortly, so again, thank you for tuning in. Again, I'm Marvin Rosetti. I grew up in South Seattle, and a lot of my experiences also came from being in South King County, also came here in Renton. So I'm also a Renton High School graduate. And I'd like to say that education involved me to have other experiences outside, to be educated at other world-class institutions like the University of Washington and the University of Southern California. I've served in government. I've become a businessman. I've also become an educator, where I'm the program manager for the Filipino-American educators of Washington State. And the reason why I'm running, and you can always see all of the rest of my vision on my website, but the reason why I'm running is because I'm disappointed and I'm angry. And I want to make this city better from the judgments that's been made by the council and even the incumbent that I'm going against today. And I had to ask myself with great deliberation with my family and other members of the community, would Renton be better if we had a new council? Would it matter if I was on council, and would I be able to make that positive impact? And the answer to that would be yes. So tonight, what I want to be able to share with you, along with all of the other issues that all of the other candidates will be showing, which all of us have the same concerns for you as residents of Renton. But the most important thing I want to be able to say is that tonight, I'm going to be able to, I'd like to present my vision to you of how we can make Renton better, and it's the Renton that we deserve, and it's the Renton that we all should have. And hopefully, we'll be able to do that in November when you vote for me and the rest of our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin. Kim Con.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
First, I want to thank the event host for hosting this candidate forum, and to the Renton community for giving me this opportunity to share our collective vision to you all and how we can accomplish it together. My name is Kim Con Vong. I come to as a former child refugee from Vietnam, growing up poor in housing projects in King County and being the first in my family to have graduated from college and entered the university in the law school and graduate. I'm still the only person in my family with a professional degree. I put myself through law school, doing full-time jobs. I made sure that I helped my family, even at an early age, working as a courtesy clerk, tutor, and a janitor while my friends at school were asleep. I am currently your council member, and I'm very honored to have had this honor, to have had this title and to work with our community. Chair of public safety, and safety has always been my primary concern. And that's why, for me, running for reelection was a tough choice for my family because there's a lot of sacrifices I know that our colleagues have made for our community. But public safety, as we've seen it, increasing crimes, how in the peak of the pandemic, where anti-Asian hate and the word of George Floyd, and our community crying out for suffering because they're suffering, there needs to be more done to support our communities. I also come to you with a lived experience, a professional experience of working in our community and as a practicing attorney, having a small practice in town here. I'm a scouts mom, a rotarian, and if I were to be elected and I would continue to work with our community to bring in those voices that have not been a part of the decision-making process and to make sure that public safety is for all, economic recovery, and improving our government transparency. Thank you so much for your time.
And Randy.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. My name is Randy Corman, and I'm here with my wife of 41 years tonight, Kathy. We raised five children in Renton Highlands, and we now have all five children living in the city with us and are near us, and five grandchildren in the city. I served 28 years on Renton City Council, and I retired from the council in 2021. Six of those years, I had served as Renton City Council president. Another six, I had served as council president pro town. During my time, I had chaired every council committee at least twice. I had worked with five mayors over that time and more than 20 different council members. I passionately represented Renton regionally on things like the East Rail Trail, I-405, Salmon Recovery, Metro Transit, Bus Rapid Transit. Also served on the Fire Authority Board. I helped create new parks and trails like the Henry Moses Aquatic Center, the Downtown Piazza Pavilion, Heritage Park, the Skate Park, Veterans Park, and helped create a diversity and inclusion program that has become a national model. The city grew two and a half times in population while I served. I was asked to come back by the mayor and by several council members in order to basically help resolve some of the challenges that the city's facing right now. So in particular, they knew I was very concerned to help with public safety, with more housing choices, transportation, cost of living, and other challenges. There's lots of opportunities for our city as well. I was an engineer and manager at Boeing for 33 years and also had a designation with the FAA for safety coordinator for them too. So anyways, that's kind of my background. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, very much. We're going to go into what we call a speed round, and this is thumbs up, thumbs down, or neutral. So thumbs up is you agree or in favor of. Thumbs down, you disagree or you're not in favor of. Thumb neutral, you have not formed an opinion, and it's okay to not have an opinion. You will have 60 seconds after the round. Each one of you will have 60 seconds if you choose to expand on any of your responses to the speed questions. So I'll read the questions. The first one is, and I'm going to read them out, they're bulleted items, so I'm going to read them out, and as soon as I see everybody's thumbs are out, we're moving on to the next First item, cap on school impact fees on multifamily developments for school district funding. I'll repeat that one again because it's probably the most complicated. You are either in favor of a cap on school impact fees on multifamily developments for school district funding. You disagree with imposing a cap on school impact fees on multifamily developments, or you're neutral with no opinion. A bottle twist is not a thumb, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Now, the rest, I'm going to go through a little bit quicker, and everybody did a good job. Increase the city's B and O tax. Mr. McGurven? Increase the city's B and O tax. Next, increase property taxes more than 1%. Add or increase a head tax. Add or increase impact fees. Add or increase permit fees above the actual city cost. Add a city income tax. Add a state income tax. Increase the real estate excise tax. Increase the real estate excise tax. Increase the City of Renton's sales tax for Renton transportation improvements. City of Renton as landlords. City of Renton as landlords. Asphalt plant on 167, Highway 167. Utilizing city resources, whether manpower or financial, to advocate against the asphalt plant on 167. Utilizing city resources, whether manpower or financial, to advocate against the asphalt plant on Highway 167.
Use city resources to fight asphalt.
The Raise the Wage Initiative as Currently Presented. Defunding police. Modification of legislation surrounding police pursuit. Modification of legislation surrounding police pursuit. Mask mandates as COVID numbers rise again. Again, mask mandates as COVID numbers rise again. Police or judicial response for open drug use. Police or judicial response for open drug use. Charter schools. Revitalizing the pavilion from its current use as an event center to a public market. Partnership with King County Regional Homeless Alliance. Homelessness impacts our business community. Homelessness impacts our business community. Would you agree or disagree or net neutral? Homelessness impacts our business community. Health through housing. Health through housing. So that's the Housing First model that's presented. Health through housing, are you in favor, disagree, no opinion? Converting hotels in the City of Renton to shelters. Increasing funding for law enforcement or hiring and/or hiring more police officers. Safe injection sites. Taxing big business. And rent control. Okay, that's your list of items. Now I'm going to track your memory as to one you might have a desire to speak more on. You have up to 60 seconds. If you don't want to speak on any, you certainly can pass. And Randy Corman, your name came up first on this. I'm going to start with you with 60 seconds.
Well, thank you, and I think the only one I needed to little, well, two of them, I guess. Health through housing, I thought that was referring to the program that's purchasing hotels. And if it is, I'm not a fan of that, but then the next question was that about that. So I'm certainly in favor of people getting healthy homes, there's no question. I just wanted to clarify that I'm not a fan of the purchasing hotels for shelters program right now. So I think that's the only one that I needed to respond to.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, if I may, the Piazza Pavilion, I would just say that I, when I left council, there was still a hybrid model that could do events and make it a week-long market, and that's how I remember it, and that was actually always my favorite notion. Thanks.
And Kim Kohn, you're next, 60 seconds to expand any of the answers or responses or pass.
First off, I want to thank you for those questions and the statements, but I think some of them were incomplete. As an attorney, I would like to clarify quite a bit, but I'll just start with the B and O tax. I think for any government, it is very clear that we need to improve our transparency. And I voted on no on the B and O tax, given that the Chamber of Commerce spoke and actually was unaware that the increase was coming. So anything that we do, I think, is very important to have transparency to our constituents. In terms of charter school, I kind of put this hand or this, it depends because I'm a public, proud public school graduate, but I learned that there are nonprofit charter schools. I had to be reeducated and learn from Black and Brown communities and their experiences in our school system. So that's where I would need more clarification, what type, but I'm all for public school education. And lastly, as we know, for Save the Cedar River, we should have stand tall and proud and against the asphalt plant decades ago, and that did not happen.
Thank you. And for clarification, it was my predecessor that was at the chamber, but I do believe that the chamber was involved in the B and O discussions. Sanjeev, we'll go, you're next, for 60 seconds.
So I want to talk, excuse me, about the homelessness. So as being a small business owner, I have seen three types of homeless people. Number one, the good people, you know, there are many reasons they became homeless, mostly the family separation, and they need help. And number two, the mental health crisis, and it's very unfortunate to see our elected officials, especially who was a big position, I don't have time to just go all there. And number three, we're quite honestly, the lazy people. They don't like to work, and these are the people who repeatedly, you know, does the crime. So at the end of the day, we don't have appropriate program to figure out who they are, right? So these lazy people, they can pretend like, you know, they don't have a job or they have a mental health crisis, but we really need to work reasonably to address this issue. Thank you.
All right, 60 seconds to go over 25 different yes or no's.
I'm glad we don't actually legislate that way. Any number one of these I could expand on, and I could probably change my mind, given the right input and process to that. So I tried my best not to give a neutral on as many as I could, but some are difficult because it really does depend. Will I commit to only raising taxes when absolutely necessary? Absolutely. Will I make sure that those impact our small businesses the least? You better believe it. My wife and I own a small business, so we understand that the impact that taxes have on small businesses. When it comes to a variety of these other issues, I think there's a public process that needs to play out in any of it. Some of these have been decided, some of these are things I'm willing to change my mind on. I invite any one of you to come up and talk to me afterwards if you disagree with me. I doubt any of you agree with every single thumb direction.
Thank you. Kim Monroe?
Thanks. I had a couple that I was thinking I wanted to give a little more clarification. With policing in terms of open drug use, I'm not opposed to the police being involved, but what I would rather see is these addicts need help, and there needs to be an infrastructure set up that's going to be more helpful to these people that are on the streets. If they're doing criminal activity, then I do agree, of course, then the police need to be involved. If it's somebody who has passed out on a sidewalk, that's probably more a case of call an ambulance than having the police come. In terms of increasing funding for police, I waver on that because I absolutely support police, fire, whatever, but I would like to see some of that funding that is currently allocated to police to maybe go to other programs, preventative programs, support programs for some of the folks that need it the most.
Thank you. Armando?
So I'd like to expand a little bit on the B and O tax. So nobody likes taxes, right? And we're either, to have high quality and a high level of services, you're either going to get taxed the residents or taxed the businesses. So the B and O tax came around because Renton used to have a head tax, and Boeing paid very little, around a million dollars a year. Boeing produces, Boeing produces in Renton, two-thirds of their economy, or two-thirds of their revenue comes from Renton, the 737 flying out of Renton. In Everett, the B and O tax is around $15 million. So that transfer, a lot of the reason the transfer went from a head tax to the B and O tax was so that the large businesses, the packed cars of the world and the Boeing of the world, Boeing, when I became mayor, was paying about $3 million a year, still way, way below the $15 million that they're paying in Everett. And so the increase that we're, that we've actually proposed and worked out with Boeing will, over the next four or five years, equal that of Everett, and they'll be paying very close to what, very close to what they're paying. Really hard to have these conversations in 60 seconds.
It is, it is. Yeah, we're testing it on all different levels. Thank you. Valerie, you are next.
Thank you. If I could talk as fast as Ryan, I might be able to cover everything, but I want to specifically talk about the pavilion because I know, I know that's a soft spot, it's a hard spot for a lot of people. And do I love the pavilion as an event center? Absolutely. Have I been there many, many times myself? Absolutely. Do I plan on holding my own event there in the near future? Absolutely. But I'm a finance person, and I look at the fact that over the last five and a half years, we have gained less than $40,000 from the current operation. We've lost $161,000. If you subtract the two COVID years, our profit for five and a half years is $2,000 on that beautiful, beautiful asset. So our average operating cost is just about $70,000 per year out of taxpayers' dollars every year, whether it's, whether it's being utilized or not.
Valerie, I'm going to cut you off there. Thank you. Erica?
Thank you. I would say it's not that I'm undecided, but I definitely need more information on some of the questions, but my concern would be more money for policing, and I would say, I said yes, and one of the reasons is that I think it's important to allocate money for officers in mental health because it's very important. So my answer was yes to more money and more policing, because at the end of the day, when you call 911, you definitely want someone to come real quick, and so you definitely do not want to delay, so I encourage more money for policing. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Marvin?
Okay, 60 seconds, go. So raising taxes, just because I don't like to raise it doesn't mean I won't. Let's start with that. So because when it comes to the B and O tax, I'm always looking at that because when you make a B and O tax for large companies, you always have to look at this, at small businesses, the ones that will be deeply impacted by that. So definitely, I will take a look at that if, before we raise any taxes. It's about the outcome. How many people are affected? How many people regret? We can't just look at the bottom line. Charter schools, let me tell you, after studying this thing for several years, let me say the following, charter schools are a little broken. And before we have one in Renton, and if that's something that has to pass our desk over here at the dais, it's to make sure that they're having that outcome, to make sure they're fully funded. I think the big ticket item, I'm going to talk about housing model for housing later, but in about two seconds, I think our big, next big ticket item is going to be the Piazza. The Piazza, I believe we need a public spaces instead of, we're going to have a whole bunch of private spaces only, so public Piazza, yes.
Thank you so much, man. I want to talk about the Health Through Housing because I agree with the Housing First model, but if all you do is housing first, then you're not really treating what you need to treat. I think it needs to be housing plus. There needs to be some wraparound services so that those people, the people who are experiencing homelessness don't go back into homelessness, so that we give them support so that they don't end up back on the streets. So for me, housing, housing, Health Through Housing is great, but I want to say housing plus, so that we actually do something to deal with the wraparound services and take care of the whole person versus just their needs for housing.
Thank you. And Kim Kohn, I want to apologize to you. I said that the chamber was aware of the B and O tax with my predecessor. There was conversation with my predecessor, but the B and O tax, I believe that you were speaking of was the most recent adjustment, and the chamber was not timely aware of that. So I thank you very much, and I apologize for my misrepresentation there. The next question is, and thank you, I know that was not traditional, I know it was uncomfortable, and I thank you for your participation and your answers. And I think, Mr. McIrving, you expressed it when you stated that more information could be used and decisions could be, minds can be changed, so you're not going to be held firm and fast to your thumb function. So the next question is budget, and we're going to, the current or previous Renton City Council members, we're not going to ask you this question because the presumed answer is yes. This is for the candidates who are running, who we in the City of Renton have not seen serve in a position of City of Renton government leadership. So the question that is being posed to four of our candidates, the question is, do you have experience working with city budgets? If not, please explain any budget experience that you do have. And again, it's, do you have experience working with city budgets? If not, please explain the budget experience you do have. And Sanjeev, I'm going to start with you on this one.
So I haven't, you know, but as a small business owner, I do all the payrolls, and you all know that after the pandemic, it wasn't easy to survive, especially the fund that we get from the state government or the local government, it's just the one-time fund only. But I'm very happy with the city staff, city elected officials, they have done such a great job in terms of the budgeting, and most of them are here, so I really like to thank for them. But, you know, we have a very limited kind of, you know, the authority, including the sales tax, but when we are looking at this kind of revenue, number one thing that as a business owner, what I have seen is, it's been 10 years, I have regular, I have customers, mostly they are the tourists, but when they come, I've never seen any of them are saying like, we want to go visit Renton. So we have very good places here, including the, you know, the Cedar River Trail, the Nickelon Beach, so we must promote that to have more kind of revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanjeev. And if I, you fell within the time, but if I did not announce it, it is a 60-second response as to, do you have experience working with city budget? If not, please explain your budget experience. So thanks for hitting that time. The next, next, Kim Monroe?
I do not have experience with a city budget. Have I done budgeting? Absolutely. Any parent who's single or otherwise that has been underemployed sure knows how to budget to make sure those kiddos get fed. Aside from that, the companies that I've worked for, the largest part of my career had been in radio, and I had been entrusted with multi-million dollar budgets for advertising and promotional spends, all of which, I'm pretty proud to say, we spent effectively, none was taken away, and we had some great results.
Wonderful, thank you. Erica?
No, I have, no, I have not, but I am the supervisor for the Criminal Department for King County, and I've had experience of budgeting my department, and also I am the second vice president of the Seattle King County NAACP, which is the oldest civil rights organization in the country. And so I do sit on that budgeting committee, and so that is what I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Marvin?
So my experience is that with the Arts Commission, the Arts Commission is almost like a little mini planning commission, so we do have grants, we're putting out public dollars. There are more public dollars I've actually done. As student, I was actually served in student government, if you can, surprise, surprise, where I was on Student Activities Fees Committee, and if you don't know that, we are distributing student activity dollars that are in the millions. This also includes, you know, the public works, the buildings, the employees working on FTEs, those are some of the more public dollars that I've done, especially, and this was in college. So again, we're doling out millions. Also, when, also my time, not only in the private sector but as nonprofits, I'm also managing grants, specifically those like dealing with the grant process over with the City of Seattle, where we had to work and do all of their reporting, but follow all of their rules. I was also on the, on the International Designer Review Board too, so, oh, thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, the next questions that will be posed, you have 90 seconds, that's a minute and a half. The subject is public safety. A number of businesses brought forward questions surrounding the de-policing of property crimes as well as the unintended impacts of previous legislation and their level of frustration with safety concerns, not just in the downtown core but throughout the city. As council, not mayor, as council, what do you see your role in strengthening public safety? What is your position on how to best support and fund the public safety? Valerie, we'll start with you again. As council, what do you see your role in strengthening public safety and your, what is your position on how to best support and fund public safety?
As I mentioned earlier, I do support our first responders, and I trust them to know what their resource needs are, both in terms of equipment and staffing, and any resources that they have, that have been asked of us, we have staffed, we have approved a special downtown policing district with four dedicated officers who respond to no other area than the downtown, and we have also passed, excuse me, we have passed ordinance regarding open drug use possession and disposal in our city, because that is also a safety issue. And I absolutely believe that when you, when you are invested in your community, it's not just about policing, it's about the response that's required by the people that we are serving. So whether that's a nurse, whether that's a crisis interventionalist, whether it's a warm handoff to a drug therapy program, whatever the need is, it's not just about police, it's police and the services that people need. I think we- I think we've, we've got, kind of gotten down this binary, uh, uh, option of, uh, it's either police or it's services. I disagree. I think it's both. I think it's whatever the community needs. That's what, as a council member, I'm prepared to provide.
Thank you. Erica? Do you want me to repeat it? As council, what do you see your role in strengthening public safety? What is your position on how to best support and fund public safety? As council, what do you see as your role in strengthening public safety? What is your position on how to best support and fund public safety?
I think it's important to get the community involved, engaging with, uh, the police department. To be able, and I think it's important that the police department is transparent. And we have to be able to build that trust. And in order to build that trust is to be able to come together, to engage in the community. I think that is truly important. Kind of get back to the old days. And I think, I think it's great that you have four police officers in that downtown quarter. But crime is not just there, it's all over. And so we have to be able to, um, provide, um, officers throughout the city of Renton. And so I'm not really sure exactly, and I'll be honest with you, anybody that knows me, I'm going to keep it real and honest. But that would be the part where I would be learning from senior council members and how we can get the money to be able to support.
Thank you. Ryan, same question to you. Do you want me to repeat the question?
I think I got it. We'll, we'll go for it.
Okay.
I got four items I want to address in terms of funding priorities. Uh, the first, it starts with personnel. Uh, we cannot fill positions, and we cannot attract quality talent if we do not, and I apologize, I do talk fast. Uh, we do, we can't fill those positions if we don't offer competitive salaries. So if we want a diverse police force that rep- that reflects our community, we need to be able to offer top salary to, against the, the limited talent pool that's out there that we're competing for. And we need to recruit individuals into the profession that might not have considered law enforcement previously as a career, and make Renton the department of choice. Second, funding priority is training. Uh, we've done a lot of this already, but there's always room for improvement. De-escalation training, implicit bias training, those are core components of a police force that is providing public safety for everybody. Uh, so I, I think having, like, a state-of-the-art training center, which we funded, uh, to help those officers be most prepared for real-world scenarios, uh, is, is, is important. So I will continue to be committed to funding those. Uh, transparency, we funded that with body cameras, uh, for a police force. Uh, we want transparency and accountability for all members of law enforcement. So the public feels that the, the, those protecting them are providing a high-quality service, and they have that accountability to see that. And then finally, uh, not every call for service requires a badge and a gun. We've done this through the FTE cares model, where we are funding co-responders and mental health professionals, uh, at these calls. We need to do more of that. It's not an either-or, but we do need folks, uh, who are better-equipped specialists, as it were, just like we have specialists within law enforcement to respond to, you know, certain, you know, where there might be more of a tactical, uh, response, where you do need someone with more militaristic training versus somebody who's there to talk somebody down off a ledge and who's having just a really bad day. Um, so we need to invest more in that. The how is the big question, uh, and that goes back to the, the lightning round on the taxes.
Thanks, Ryan.
Like, we have to find diverse funding sources.
So when we talk about the public safety, we all, it, it's very easy to blame the police department. But the number one question is, we don't have a strong law to hold accountable. Because my restaurant was robbed like three times. We know who they are, the police knows who they are, right? So we don't have a strong law. Unless we, we, we implement a strong law, we'll never improve the public safety. So number two is, what I'm looking is, you know, there are many people, they don't like police to be around. So how can we improve the, you know, relationship between our police department and the, and then the resident? So when we talk about the police, you know, police are, you know, the employee of the city, so their number one job is to protect our community. So that's also a part of public service. We must understand that. So one of my community member, when he was retired from the military, he asked me, brother, what would you like me to do next? I said, why don't you join the police department? And he said, no, 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 you know, because there are lots of messes, good and bad, that goes around. Then later he came, and then I told him, it's, you served the country, now it's your time to serve our community. So, you know, a few days later, he came, I want to join. Now he's in the liquid, uh, police department. So it's also inspiring, a good things. And number one thing is, we must need a strong law to hold accountable for those criminal activities people. Otherwise, they know that there's no any strong law. They will keep repeating and doing. And this is all, this would only be a topic to entertain other, other people, but we really need a strong policy to hold them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question for the mayor's candidates. This is a pandemic relief question that was submitted. This is to Armando, what were the federal pandemic funds used for? And what portion was distributed to small businesses? You have 90 seconds, and I'll repeat the question. What were the federal? Pardon? Uh, there's a, a, the question to Kim subsequent would be, would you have handled this the same or differently? Please explain. So the question is, what were the federal pandemic funds used for? And what portion was distributed to small businesses?
So the small business fund we actually put together, um, the, the challenge with federal funds is you can't just hand them out. It's a public gift of funds. And so what we had to do is tie it to loss of revenue. Um, one of the challenges were getting some of the, the businesses to, um, be able to show that data. Um, whenever you're handing out grants, especially federal grants, there's a lot of paperwork, and there's a lot of back-of-the-house stuff that has to be taken care of. Um, unfortunately, we still had money left over for more small business grants that we couldn't give out. Um, our, our finance team was working diligently with small businesses throughout the city to try and hand out grants and try and get grants out there. Um, the problem is that you, we have to be able to, um, uh, support that when the grants come due and when we actually have to show the data to the federal government. So, um, would I have liked to have been able to hand out money to every small business, um, from day one, absolutely. Um, but it's extremely challenging. Um, we did actually go back out and, um, did a second round of, of grants with the small business community, because there was a double impact. You had COVID, and you also had the construction that was going on downtown. The construction project started years and years before we ever knew COVID was coming around. And so because of that, um, kind of double hit, we actually went back out into, um, the community and offered a whole nother round of small business, um, grants to businesses, so.
Thank you, Armando. And I just want to take a moment to apologize to each and every candidate here. If, if I interrupt you when you hit that red card, it is not a welcoming feeling, so thank you for your understanding. And I appreciate your timeliness. Kim, 90 seconds. The question is, would you have handled the same or differently with the federal funding? Please explain.
Sure. So to begin with, nobody expected COVID. Nobody expected what happened to happen. So, you know, that was a, a tough putt for anybody to figure out. Okay, well, now we have all this money. What are we going to do with it? But in business, I mean, most folks keep their receipts. And I would think that, in the way that I would do it a little bit differently, is I would find ways around some of the, um, the roadblocks to providing money. I, one business owner, um, that I'm aware of, didn't ask for a huge sum of money, maybe $2,500, something in that range, um, that was never received. And why? You know, I, I just think that everybody was suffering through that. Small business absolutely suffered through, through that. And they needed the help. And I just think that within the community, I would have found maybe some other ways to do it. Now granted, again, I'm not a politician. I've not been, worked in government before, and I don't know all of the rules and regulations. But I would think with community, I'd want to help my people. And that's just how I feel about it.
I'm sorry, I have to, I have to rebut on that.
Okay, so you're using your one card.
I, yeah, I'm going to rebut on this.
Okay.
So, um, and, and I appreciate the sentiment there. The problem is that the city of Renton is audited every year, and these audits are intense and severe. And the issue with the audits, if you get a finding from the auditors, it will impact all of your grants for the next three years. And so if we try and bend the rules, and we try and adjust things and, and make things a little bit different, the auditor will find it. I mean, we just had a finding the other day where we were supposed to actually post a job for two weeks, and they only posted it for one week. And it was considered a finding. Now thankfully, that wasn't enough to actually give us a, an official finding. But that's how, that's how specific and detailed these auditors get. So the idea that we can actually, you know, make up our own rules when it comes to handing out grants and money, it just isn't the case. Um, I'm a small business owner. There was nobody that felt more compassionate for the small business owners than myself. Um, I felt it in my own business. I watched businesses, it's, it's been my entire life. If there was a way that I could have pushed more dollars out there, and I can't tell you how many times I went back
Thank you, Armando.
To our finance department and continued over and over to tell them, we need to find ways to get more money out there.
Thank you. So piggybacking off that last question, the question being posed now is, are you content with the way the city handled the distribution of funds? And what would you have done differently? Please explain. Ed Prince. The question is, are you content with the way the city handled the distribution of federal pandemic funds?
Um, am I content? Am I content? I think we did everything as legally and above the board as we could. So from that standpoint, yes, I'm content. Would I like for us to be able to do more? Absolutely, within the guidelines of whatever I would like for us to be able to do more. I was, I walked around downtown during the pandemic, and seeing those businesses close really hurt my heart. And there were some who were able to do some walk-up and mobile things, but knowing that there were some, that they, you know, could not operate, like they were pre-COVID, really, really hurt me. And no, I, I think we handled it the best way we could within the federal guidelines that we had.
Thank you. Marvin? Was there anything you would have done differently? Are you content with the way the city handled the distribution of funds? And what would you have done differently?
So with respect with the mayor's answer about what the city could, could, could not have done, I understand the, the need to follow all of the federal regulations. However, um, I'm not content. And I know that there are business owners who are not either. And one of those things where I would probably, um, advance, again, this is, um, advance is more advertising. Letting them know what the rules are, letting them know what the guidelines are. Um, city, cities are always good to saying no, uh, only to protect themselves. Uh, so, but the answer is, how do we get those funds on the street? That was the purpose of the funding to begin with. So more work from, if we could, from the city, and hopefully that could have been part of the funding in order to say, um, how much of these funds could have gotten onto the street? Were there case managers that are working with more businesses in order to get, um, more out there? And hopefully, um, save more businesses where we could have. Um, which businesses were more, uh, more likely to be successful in those applications? These are some of the things that small business owners, especially when it comes to federal grants, never had the opportunity to know and learn. It's very specific, like the mayor has stated. So when it comes to those city services and getting those out there, I know that, um, one of the things that I would like to work on is to make sure, just generally speaking, is to improve city services. So when we get that opportunity, especially with the emergency funds, that Renton City Government is prepared and ready to go to serve you immediately.
Thank you, Marvin. Kim Khan, same question to you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, public service is just an extension of my community service. And being a councilwoman during the global pandemic is no easy task. I literally took the job as a full-time job, even though it was a part-time gig. I know your questions regarding, um, business, but I also want to ask, earlier you were talking about public safety in terms of councilwoman, do you want us to address only the business part? Or what?
This is relating to the federal pandemic funds, what they were used for, and what portion was distributed to po- small businesses.
So as a small businessman, business owner in town myself, um, and seeing our community suffering and the way that we went about with addressing the American Rescue Fund, uh, Act, and Act of ARPA funds, what $18 million of our tax dollars from the feds coming into the city of Renton directly, only $600,000 went to small businesses. Well, as an attorney, I understand the legality of being audited and all the great stuff that comes with the law. But certainly in a policy level and in the recommendation, I think we fell short, and we dropped the ball on our small businesses. That's a painful watch. Um, it, it's definitely, seeing what our community right now, where some businesses have not received the grants. It's not about the process, it's about the policy, which, how much money, and who is deserving. And I think unfortunately, we dropped the ball.
And Mr. Carmen?
Thanks, Ann. I think, you know, so I, I've listened to all the discussion about this. Um, it's very, it was very disappointing that not more of the funds made it to our small business. And, and, um, I, I think that was a disaster, honestly, um, the way that it played out. I think the one thing that had, had I been, uh, had I stayed on council and been a voice on council, I would have pushed very hard to push back on the rules that we were trying to follow. And people would have seen my name in the newspaper as I would have been raising the issue to the state and federal level uh, as we were running into roadblocks. I, there was a time in the city when, when we went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court to fight a zoning issue, and we won. It, you know, and, and we weren't afraid, even at that time, uh, with 40,000 people, to take issues all the way to the top. And, um, and I think if we ever see something like this happen again, where there's $14 million and we're not getting a piece of it, you know, that, that's, that's what we need to do, is, is not be afraid to, to tell the state and the feds that, that we don't like the way it's going, and we're, we're going to fix it. I, I don't want to be disrespectful to the, the council and mayor, because I know they were probably doing some of that. But had I been there, they would have seen even more of that.
So question is presented. Oh, 60-second rebuttal. So Kim Khan.
I, I just want to clarify the rules in the rebuttal. Is it just a one-time rebuttal?
One time. You have one, one card, that's it. Not, you're not using it right this now, just clarifying. Were you using your card now?
Sure.
You, you don't, don't feel that you have to. I just was asking, are you clarifying or were you wanting to use that?
I was trying to clarify the rules.
Okay.
Because I couldn't hear quite as clearly earlier. But, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Do the, do the rest of us have an opportunity to answer that question?
No, that, that is it for that question. So if anybody has a 60 seconds that they want to use their card for, they are welcome to, to use that for that statement.
Thank you.
Okay. Question on homelessness. This came from one of our nonprofit service providers. And I will, I'll announce who's going to answer the ques- who the question will be posed to, so you can, you can think about on it. This is posed to Kim Khan and Randy, and Armando, and Kim Monroe. Homelessness. What will you do as a potential representative of the city to help the homeless population in Renton? Do you feel the current administration, our, and Director of Department of Human Services, are providing an effective plan in assisting the homeless population? How will you ensure that Renton businesses aren't vandalized and protected to conduct business safely and profit? And I know that's a compound question I'll ask again. So what will you do as a potential representative to help the homeless population in Renton? Do you feel the city is currently providing an effective plan in assisting this population? And how will you ensure businesses aren't vandalized and protected to conduct business safely? safely? So Kim Khan, I'll start with you on that one. And you have ninety seconds on this.
When we address homelessness, it has to be a holistic approach. And unfortunately, before I got onto council for nine years, we did not increase our human services funding. So there is a center of policy, we didn't look at the human being as capital. So that for us to sink it in, because the population grew twofold, literally with the census. What I have done during the time and will continue to do is to speak to impacted communities, whether it's unsheltered communities or the businesses and the residents. During the pandemic, it's easy to just throw people away in terms of not having shelter and not having food. But for me, my conscience cannot sit still. So while discussions of homelessness, I think first, let's look at our equity housing human services funding, and I'm very glad that we increased it by one point five million to address the need. Secondly, looking at building out not just those who are currently unsheltered, but really building out the American dream for everyone, guys, making sure it's inclusive and how can we get ventures protection from rent to own, having our young folks be independent and our elders being able to live in an age that didn't be. To help small businesses, I talked to the chief, and last year we created the Downtown Patrol District Unit, making sure that walking be, understanding the relationship between small businesses and residents and unsheltered communities. The city has not addressed this appropriately.
Thank you.
We shall, we, yeah.
Randy.
Okay, ninety seconds. This is a, there's a lot here. So with, with, with housing, I mean, the, our homeless population, there's various avenues to becoming homeless. Those that just simply can't afford housing, we, we are working really hard. During all the years I was on council, I worked hard to create subsidized and affordable housing. We're creating it by the hundreds right now. And, and a lot of that work, I'm very proud of that I had done development work for that. And I'd love to explain all that, except I don't really have time. Then we have, we have other groups of people that can't seem to keep a home because they're dealing with behavioral health issues or substance abuse issues, and they have to get into treatment. So we have to have paths where if they commit crimes, minor crimes, that, that they can be diverted into treatment, and we have to have the treatment centers. And I know that that's something that would be worthwhile, and some of those are going to have to be residential treatment centers that, that can, can make people well. We also do need protections to, to keep people in their homes when somebody has like their car stolen and they can't make rent. It's a very cost-effective thing to be able to help them like one time deal with a crisis to stay in their home. And then we have to have the law enforcement to protect small businesses. It's, it's not okay for people to create a lifestyle where they're stealing from small businesses or breaking into places. We need to add police officers, we need to add code compliance if that's necessary.
Thank you, Randy. And to the candidates for mayor, we'll start with Armando.
So unfortunately, I could talk about this one issue for the next thirty minutes and still not finish it. The homeless issue is not something we're going to be able to finish in ninety seconds. What I can tell you is, I know the issue that we're probably all thinking about, which is the unhoused that are on the street. So the way that the cities, all of us, have dealt with providing services has been very passive. We, we fund over sixty-four agencies, over a million dollars, and we hope that the work gets done out there. And then we hope that the county fills in on the backside, providing some of the other services, in, in terms of putting people in houses. I actually have a meeting set up in two weeks with mayors from four other cities with a new strategy. And the idea is, we're sick and tired of the county not fulfilling their duties. The idea is, there are two or three different service providers that have a different model. And one of them's in our community, one of them we work with outside of our community. The idea is, is to team up our resources between the cities, and each of us can provide a little part of it, get actually boots on the ground, service providers down there working with the homeless and finding them pathways out, instead of continuing the direction we're going, which is making people comfortable in their misery, which that's what we've been doing for months after months after months, instead of actually trying to find ways to help these folks and get them into housing, get them into treatment. The lift is too heavy for the city to do it. We don't have the ability, the resources to handle all the different scenarios that you have from all the different, all the different people that need help. I'm going to pass this off in one second, this is just too damn important. This is the issue of our day right now. So.
Armando, thank you. And it is, not to, not to take away what you're saying, it is incredibly important, and thank you for the respect of the time with ten different candidates and two hours to go, so thank you. Kim.
And I will agree with the mayor that this is, this issue is a very heavy lift, and it's not something that you can flip a switch on and off and fix it. It's going to take time, it's going to take commitment and enormous resources, quite frankly, and it's not a hotel just to shove people into to keep them out of the rain or out of the cold. When, and, and just like Randy had said, you know, there's a lot of pathways that people find themselves to homelessness. It could be, you know, abuse, it could be just financial constraints, addiction, alcoholism, all of those things combined. But these folks need help. They're still human beings. And that's one thing that really bothers me when I hear people talk about the homeless and it's just like, oh, well, just ignore them, you know? That's somebody's brother, somebody's father, probably a veteran, you know? I mean, it's awful the way that some of these people are treated, and they're human beings. They deserve every right that you and I have in this room tonight. They need help. If they're living on the street, it's not necessarily by their choice. I can't imagine myself living out in a tent on a street. And these folks, you know, some of them, they have kids too. They need all kinds of resources. Yes, a roof over their head, that's a great thing to start with, a hot shower, meals, they need food, they need healthcare, they need other services that are not necessarily being provided. And it's, it is, it is such an important issue, and I could talk about it all night too.
I'm going to interrupt you there on that one, though. Thank you very much. Question is, this one is for Ryan and Sanjeev, and Armando and Kim. Economic development. As we continue to emerge from the global pandemic, what are your strategies and recommendations to attract and retain businesses? How will you make this a business-friendly city? Ryan, I'll start with you.
Thank you for that, excuse me, thank you for that question. This is an area that we do need to focus on as a city. We are still recovering. The pandemic was traumatizing to businesses. We lost a lot of good businesses that were homegrown businesses, and that's frankly where we should be supporting. A lot of the homegrown talent we have right here. Our economic development efforts, you know, we, we look at some of the big entities that we land here because they do bring, you know, economic prosperity to the city as a whole. But where it really starts is with the small businesses, and I would like to see us do more that we can to, to support them. One of the ways which I think the city is actually doing that is with that pavilion space we mentioned earlier, having those kind of incubator startup spaces. If you go up to Bothell, you'll see they have on Bothell Way, they're called the pop shops. They're just like little, like individual coffee stands where, styled buildings, where businesses can literally transition from the garage to having an actual retail brick-and-mortar space. That's how we, one of the ways we can leverage it. We want to make sure that we have the resources during that critical startup phase for those small businesses to be able to thrive and have a shot. The other area I would want to address this is in, in the workforce side of things, to make sure that we have the talent, homegrown talent right here. We have Renton Technical College producing a lot of skilled workers, and so having that skilled talent base here within Renton is another attractive quality. The last thing I want to make sure we really promote within the region that we have that is our geography and, and our access to transportation. Yeah, four oh five is terrible in the morning, I take it every day, but we have transportation networks that can get folks that aren't able to afford to live in the city, which we want to work on that, that is a balance of the economic development, but make sure that we have the transportation network in place so people can get here.
Thank you, Ryan. Sanjeev.
Yeah, I already explained about the, you know, the more income for the city, but, you know, when we talk of the small businesses, you know, there are many businesses they couldn't survive because they couldn't do the good businesses. But also other side, there are many businesses I have seen who are doing good, also they, they couldn't survive. So the, the reason is, you know, unless we improve the public safety, unless we improve, you know, how we can make a very friendly, work, working-friendly kind of, you know, city, we'll never, never, you know, you know, support those kind of small businesses. You know, whatever the Ryan said, you know, I call him my friend, so I'm totally with him, yeah. He said a very good thing. I'm also beginning to enter the public safety, so you know, next level, we, we must work with the, you know, the high school students and to, 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 you know, make them skilled kind of labor for the next level. So, you know, I totally agree with Ryan McCarmen. Thank you.
Thank you. Armando. Question is, random generator, Armando, as we continue to emerge from the global pandemic, what are your strategies and recommendations to attract and retain businesses? How will you make this a business-friendly city?
Economic development. So what we're doing with economic development is, it's something that I felt very important, was very important coming into office. And it's kind of a three-pronged approach. The first thing is we froze a position in the planning and development, use that salary to allow the Renton Downtown Partnership to hire an executive director, to, to come up with the Main Street and get the Main Street designation, stabilize that so that they can get the funding and become self-serving and help the small businesses in the downtown community. The other thing is we hired an executive director, somebody with experience talking to the larger, you know, entities out there, the sounders of the world. And right now she's in conversations with Costco, they're looking at Renton. Kraken is, is looking at Renton and bringing sheets of ice down here. We have Dick's looking here, there's a number of businesses that are really attracting. So regionally, looking at some of that regional draw. And then thirdly is actually supporting the businesses internally, so making sure that the businesses that are already here have the kind of support they need to be successful in the long term. I still have time?
Yeah, twenty seconds.
Wow, this, this is fantastic. So economic development is something that, it's, it's one of the few areas of the city that can actually pay for itself, right? It can generate income. It's an area that if you bring a business in, one of them is Tesla. Tesla was an amazing find, they just landed in our city. When you buy a Tesla in Bellevue, they actually deliver it in Renton, we get the sales tax for it. So those kind of.
Now you're, now you're at time.
Oh darn, I wasted.
Kim, same question.
Could you repeat the question?
I can. What are your, as we continue to emerge from the global pandemic, what are your strategies and recommendations to attract and retain businesses? How will you make this a business-friendly city?
Well, first of all, I love our downtown area. There's some really great shops there, and I'd love to see more of that kind of thing happen. One of the things that I, one of my four jobs I was working at the time, I worked at the airport, and one of the things that they do is they'll have like these, like Ryan mentioned, pop-up shops. There'll be like kiosks where they'll come in, they'll have a year's lease and they try it out at, you know, cheaper rent, and then try to move them into a bigger store. I think those kinds of incentives could be really, really helpful, but coming from, you know, a broadcast background is communications and publicity and promotion and being able to get the word out to people too, to let people know what Renton's really all about. I mean, it's, social media is probably one of the easiest ways to get the word out there just to entice business and get them to come down, give it a try. Try it, you'll like it.
Next question is for Valerie and Erica, Kim Khan and Randy. The recent past has shown Renton in the East and South Sound communities grew by twenty to forty-five percent in population over the last ten to twenty years. What should the city of Renton's priorities be when planning forward for significant growth? What should the city of Renton's priorities be when planning forward for additional significant growth? And Erica, we'll start with you on this one. And it's in ninety seconds. Ninety seconds. Sure can. Yep. What should the city of Renton's priorities be when planning forward for additional significant growth? That's population growth.
I would say housing, of course, but housing and transportation and providing housing close to transportation. I catch the bus every day to work. And so to be able to have transportation and bus frequently, you know, coming so that I can get to work on time, but to be able to live close to transportation is very important. And so I think that to provide transportation, whether it be the Link Light Rail, that would have been great if we would have had that for someone who used public transportation every day. I would have used Link Light Rail instead of the bus. And then that ties into, of course, public safety. But I think it's very important that we understand that a lot of times people do not have automobiles and to be able to, to have transportation close to where they live is very important.
Thank you, Erica. Valerie.
Thank you. I, I completely agree with Erica, the transit-oriented density for housing is, is a critical component. But basically, it's about, we have, we have growth targets for 2040 that include both housing and jobs. And we have identified a City of Renton Housing Action Plan that has identified the number of housing, the types of housing, the location of housing, including very low income, low income, middle market and market rate housing. And it's a huge number. And we also need to focus on, can we get people to live where they work and work where they live? Wouldn't that be awesome? Can we build the kind of economic development that brings the quality work that will support the market rate housing, but also have housing that supports the very low income, the low income and middle market housing? That's what I think we need to focus on in terms of how do we manage the growth? We know the growth is coming, it's inescapable, we have a mandate. So I think housing is number one, and the economic and educational opportunities to provide the, the incomes for those houses. Thank you.
Thanks, Valerie. Randy, I'll go to you next.
Okay, well, and I got ninety seconds, right?
Ninety seconds.
Okay. So we, we do have a comprehensive plan that covers a lot of this, hard to go over in ninety seconds, but I do want to hit some themes that are very important tonight. First of all, I'll, I'll say the housing. I firmly agree. I very much appreciate Valerie bringing up the Housing Action Plan. It provides a good mix, which is a big part of what we need to do. Obviously affordability is more important than ever with the cost of living rising so fast. And, and so the city is planning for that. I also want to say on the, the public safety issue, we have to plan for police. We, I, I think, you know, I think it's great that we, that we, we budgeted for four more this last year, but I think we should probably be like planning ten per, per year and getting them hired and putting them into the academy because it takes a long time to reserve academy spots. So if we want a police officer a year from now, we got to get that started now. And as our population grows, we're, they're just going to get more overworked. Lastly, I want to touch on the subject of transportation. There was money in Sound Transit Three, five million dollars to create a concept for a Link Light Rail station in Renton. It's so important that we complete that concept because we know voters in Seattle any time are going to push through a Sound Transit Four. And our Link Light Rail station needs to be a concept by then that's part of that because whether voters in Renton vote yes or no on it, it will pass, so we need our, our Link Light Rail, and that would help tremendously. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Kim Khan.
Thanks for this question. As I look at growth and how we can do it in terms of intentional planning, and unfortunately can't go back in time, but I think if we had intentionally planned for diverse communities and, and growth in Renton, we would have centered our human services and the funding surrounding that. I do believe that housing, transportation, public safety are some of the key things we want to work on, but it's always in parallel with everything, right? It's not just one issue at a time, because as a human being, as a community, we have all multifaceted. as a community, we have multifaceted issues and matters that we have to address. As you've mentioned, the Housing Action Plan, the goal is not necessarily to have housing that is affordable, but obtainable, attainable. What do we define affordability? 2,000, 4,001 for one two-bedroom is not affordable to working families. I grew up, poor, I grew up in the housing projects. I grew up as a renter. I know what it means to have attainable housing. So, when we talk about public safety, it is a concern that our officers do not, the number of officers that we have do not match up with the number of residents. So, I think that as we increase, I very much support our officer, making sure that we have officers, and even on my own time, I've worked with community members to make sure that we have the Police Foundation to set up and supporting officers in mental health departments. It's very important.
Thanks, Kim. Next question is for Erica and Valerie and Randy and Kim. As one member of a seven-member team, what is your strategy and approach to gain trust from your colleagues to effectively get things done? Can you give a recent example of a situation when you have been successful in doing so? Again, as one member of a seven-member team, what is your strategy and approach to gain trust from your colleagues to effectively get things done? And can you give a recent example of a situation you've been successful? Kim, we're going to start with you on this one.
Yes, thank you for this question. I think it's important to gain trust with our colleagues and to work collaboratively. I have been respectful in profession, working with my colleagues and with other organizations that I've been a part of, as you can see on my website and the boards that I serve actively, not just mainly. Recently, for me, it's important for renters' protection, and I thank my colleague, I think most of you are here and out in the audience, to make sure that we protect our renters. So, working with our colleagues in that and addressing the issue. For me, though, I'm not a rubber stamp, guys. I grew up having to struggle, seeing all communities of different skin colors than those who are working poor, all shades of colors. And for me, it's to be here to represent our veterans or seniors and all those that who have come before me and those who will continue to come before me to have access to government. So, I will respectfully disagree and will continue to advocate for the Renton community that have been left out of the conversation.
Thank you, Kim. Randy?
Can you remind me that question?
Sure. As one member of a seven-member team, what is your strategy and approach to gain trust from your colleagues to effectively get things done? Can you give a recent example of a situation where you've been successful in doing so?
Okay, and I got 90 seconds?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, I, I was elected seven times in a row, often with the majority of council members endorsing me. And, and I'm proud to say that I've got a majority of, of council members endorsing me in this race, actually. And, but I didn't always agree with them. And, you know, they, they knew that I wouldn't always agree with them. But we had, and I continue to have relationships with the council members where we say what we're thinking, and we, we make decisions by bringing all the opinions, and then we vote, and we move on, and, you know, start, start the next issue the, the next week. And so, over the time I was a council member, I, I, at different times disagreed with some of my, my favorite colleagues on council, and that was okay. A great example, it's an old example, but when we were trying to save the Cedar River Library, which we ultimately saved, ultimately, the entire council, it took a while, but the entire council came around and was, was helping, you know, rebuild that library over the Cedar River, and it had been quite controversial. I'd say, to pick a recent example to answer the question, even though I'm not on council, I went before the council multiple times to push that we would have a drug law so that you couldn't do open hard drugs in the City of Renton. And, and I talked with multiple council members during that time, and one, one by one, and, you know, I felt like, oh, wow, everybody's on board this. And I thought it was very respectful and appreciative, and I do the same.
Thanks, Randy. Valerie, as a one, as one member of a seven-member team, what is your strategy and approach to gain trust from your colleagues to effectively get things done? And please provide a recent example.
Thank you. I, I think the, the key part of that question is one member of a seven-member team. It is not about me. It is about us doing the people's work. I'm not, I'm here in service to the community, and I think if you bring that with you to the table every single time, and you're transparent, and you're honest, and you're consistent, the people will come to see that you are truly here to do the people's work. And being one member of a seven-member team is sort of like a, an arranged marriage by the public. You're not always going to get along, but as long as you focus that we are here to serve the people, we're not here to serve ourselves, then it makes it easy. It really makes it quite easy to get along with your team members and to actually get stuff done. And a recent example is that in my third year on council, my ability to get along with my team members and my fellow council members, I was unanimously elected as president of the council in my very first term on council. It works. You've just got to be humble.
Thanks, Valerie. Erica, same question.
That was awesome. I'm going to say communication and respect. It is important to trust the people that you are working with. I work with 52 judges, and they trust me to do my job and to do it well. The public trusts me. And I, I would agree with Valerie, consistency is very important. Hum, to be humble. But here's the thing, you can talk the talk, but you definitely need to walk the walk, the walk the walk. And that is the problem. A lot of people are not walking the walk. It's good to say, and it sounds real great, but when it comes down to it and you have an issue with your colleague, you need to be able to hash it out, do the work of the people, and go home. And that is very important. And to be honest with you, I've been to council, and I can see it. You can see that that's not happening. So, we talk about being transparent. Let's be transparent tonight. Thank you.
Question, next question is for the mayor's candidates on communication. How do you plan to involve Renton residents in your decision-making process? Kim, we'll start with you. Again, 90 seconds.
Well, first of all, I like to say communications is kind of my superpower. I'm, I am probably more transparent than I should be at times, but the truth is the truth, and I'm going to share it with you. And in terms of communicating with constituencies, I guess this would kind of go back to how to, how to attract businesses to Renton. There's all sorts of ways. Social media, there's community get-togethers, which happen often enough, but not advertised well enough to the entirety of the community. I'd like to see more of that happen. And if I were honored enough to be your mayor, I would ensure that that happens, that we would have time where we could put, excuse me, it's past my bedtime, where things would be more community involved, and that word would get out from, aw, Armando likes me. To get the community involved. And I would like to have, you know, an, a council kind of set up where we would have people in the community that would, you know, keep us honest about, hey, it's Pride Month, let's do things for Pride Month. Or, it's, you know, Suicide Awareness Month, let's get it, get schools involved and, and talk with kids, you know, and just find ways to bring people more together. Communication, social media, whatever it takes. I'd be out there doing it.
And Armando, same question to you. How do you plan to involve Renton residents in your decision-making process?
So, I really believe that the positions that we hold as elected officials, we are just representing the residents and the will of the residents. And if we don't have conduits to the residents or the businesses, then we're not doing our job representing the individuals. There's a couple of things that I rely on. First and foremost, there's the connection that I have with my fellow council members. Council members and hearing them and listening to them because they represent a number of people, they're an extension of myself. I have, you know, over 30, 40 years in business here. I, I know hundreds of people in the community, and they all know people. And I try and be available. Every email that's sent to me, I respond to personally. I hand out my personal cell phone number regularly. If somebody wants to contact me, I will take a phone call or an email from anybody anytime. And I, I believe that you're not doing your job if you're not willing to listen to everybody. And the most important people to listen to are the ones that you disagree with. It's easy to listen to people that you agree with. It's difficult to really hear people that have a different point of view. But if I'm doing my job, I'm representing everybody. The thing about being an elected official in a city is it's nonpartisan, and we represent the entire city, not just the people that we're friends with. So-
Thank you, Armando. So, we have some questions from candidates to one, one another. Some elected to participate, some elected to not. You'll have 60 seconds to answer these questions. The first one is for Randy Corman. Randy, given that you are running on wanting to unite the council, why didn't you do so while you were council president during the peak of a global pandemic when we needed your leadership the most, in particular to denounce hate crimes against our BIPOC and Asian-American communities? Is public safety not for all? Again, this is a candidate-to-candidate question.
It's, it's not really a fair question because we did denounce Asian hate. Mayor Pavoni and I signed a proclamation denouncing Asian hate. So, I don't really understand the question. And I'm, I was, I was appalled by, by the Asian hate. I'm appalled by hate of all kinds, and always have been.
Thank you. Valerie, question for you. This is a candidate-to-candidate question. You have 60 seconds. In the last four years, what programs have you initiated and worked with the Black and Brown organizations that have translated to budget allocations that support the Black and Brown community? Again, in the last four years, what programs have you initiated and worked with the Black and Brown organizations that have translated to budget allocations that supported the Black and Brown community?
I have supported, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have supported our City of Renton Human Services budget, which addresses not only Black and Brown communities, but communities of all sorts in terms of funding those services that are effective at providing shelter, housing, and food insecurity services, and wellness, economic, and educational opportunities for all. And I would say that I am in full support of the services that are provided, whether they're for particularly Black and Brown communities or all communities. And so, I wouldn't say that I have excluded Black and Brown communities in my support for all services for all people. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Another candid, you want to use your card? Okay, 60-second rebuttal card.
I'm sorry, I, I don't think you truly answered the question. And I, I understand you support it, but what have you initiated? What programs and what, what agencies or organizations have you worked with personally? That was the question.
Do, do I respond to that, or?
If you would like to use the 60-second response.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Candidate-to-candidate question.
Madam moderator?
Yes. You'd like to use your card?
Yes.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Well, I, I try to be fair and to ask questions that are of relevancy to all of our communities. And as you are sitting here, Mr. Corman, next to the first Asian-American woman and first refugee council member to represent in the City of Renton, while I don't represent Asian folks only, I represent veterans, seniors, everyone I know, spectrum from Republicans, independents, to Democrats. And during a global pandemic, when I sought for your leadership, asking for support right before council meeting, you said you would support my motion to ask the city to, motion to refer the matter of addressing hate crimes and their plan to address hate crime to, to the city. You, within 30 minutes, you voted no. I think that having an incident where an Asian man was called to racial slur and spat on during the pandemic and having communicative diseases is something for us to have to look into. For nine days, city, city leadership did not do anything.
Thank you, Kim.
That is not how I remember it. I remember that there was an, an incident that happened to downtown, and by the next council meeting, which was, you know, the only, the only way the council can take action is through council meetings. But by the next council meeting, we were passing a proclamation that I took, I took time to, quite a bit of time to, to write with Mayor Pavoni denouncing Asian hate. So, I, I, you know, kind of resent the implication that, that I didn't take that seriously, because I did take it very seriously. And, and I'm happy to display that, that proclamation for people to show what we put into it.
The next, the next candidate-to-candidate question is for Marvin. Marvin, outside of public safety and arts funding, what three items would you fund in next year's budget? And how would you get your colleagues to support your priorities? Again, outside of public safety and arts funding, what three items would you fund in next year's budget? And how would you get your colleagues to support your priorities?
I need a second to write this down. So, first thing that I want to, one of the first things I want to worry about is parks. There are a lot of assets that are in the park that we have in, both in Coulon and in Kiwanis, there are new parks. For example, I would love to have a skate park. I know that there are people advocating for all of these wonderful assets. I think a skate park is one of them. When we're talking about other aspects of funding, I'd like to also talk about or add sports fields to that, where I would be able to talk with all of my colleagues on kid sports. I'm the co-founder of Angels in Sports, and one of them is about having, make sure that there's enough play fields. And for purposes of disclosure, my nephew plays with, with my opponent's son on the same, that's in Bruins football team. So, we want to make sure that, you know, having those opportunities for young kids to go have sports time is, is a great and wonderful thing. But again, outside of that, what I want to be able to put in, besides that, is a little bit more on the economic development side, where we're talking about working with small business incubators. I will have to refer that out. Thank you for time.
And a candidate, thank you, Marvin. Candidate-to-candidate question for Ed. Ed, as a member of the Sound Transit Board, you stated at a Renton Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee meeting, and again, this is a candidate-to-candidate, it's not from the chamber. As a member of the Sound Transit Board, you stated in a Renton Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee meeting that the planned, that the planned $10 million Sound Transit parking garage meant for Renton went away due to low ridership, while Kent, Auburn, and Sumner received over $350 million in RTA investment in their parking garages scheduled to open in 2026 and 2027, while Renton will only get a $2 million- in 2026 and 2027, while Renton will only get a $2 million street-level parking lot and bus link that will open in 2034. What do you have to say to the people of Renton about your service on the RTA board when millions of RTA have come from Renton residents with very little investment in return?
First, I want to say thank you for that question. I think there's a distinction. So the, you said Kent and Auburn? Kent and Auburn's fundings were in the Sound Transit 2 package, which was not impacted by the Fairbox revenues like the Sound Transit 3 package was. We took a hard vote on that realignment thing and it passed unanimously and everyone, and I mean, everyone had to swallow hard and know that there are going to be things that are going to be lost. And I'll be the first one to say, Renton has not gotten its fair share for Sound Transit and the CEO knows that I feel that way. I just met with her last week and I can't remember, someone mentioned something about light rail and one of the conversations we had was about the planned light rail study for light rail to Renton and when that's going to be timed and how we're going to sequence it. So we're still working on it and we're still working on that parking garage to try to make it be exactly what it was in the Sound Transit 3 package.
Thanks Ed. We are nearing the end. That is the completion of the candidate-to-candidate questions. We know that these answers have been very short and it's only opening a window of opportunity for conversation for you to have with these candidates that are here. October 11th, we're hosting a meet and greet at the Renton Chamber of Commerce and we would invite you to join us and join the candidates to have further conversation and candid conversation. So please use these questions as opportunities for further conversation. I want to thank the candidates here for being respectful for one, to one another and respectful to myself. Ryan, in an effort of transparency in addressing your question, I was not the intended moderator. As our moderator was unable to attend, as CEO, I stepped forward. I appreciate your understanding as I took the position. I have endorsed personally. It is not reflective of the Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce does not have any candidates that they support or endorse. We support and appreciate all of you for taking the time and efforts and energy to put yourselves forward in service. With that, I will start with our closing remarks. You each will have one minute for a closing remark. And Kim Monroe, I will start with you.
Well, thank you very much Diane and thank you very much for following up on an email to make sure I got here, so I appreciate that. It's been really a pleasure to be here and have a chance to talk to all of you. I will just say straight up, I'm not a politician. I've never been a politician. I look forward to being a mayor and I'm hoping beyond hope for your vote and I promise you this much, my goal will be to bring all of you to the table, to listen to all of you and find solutions and ways to make us all happy and productive and a cleaner, healthier Renton.
Thank you, Kim. Armando, one-minute closing.
All right, I'd like to thank my son Roman, who's joined me tonight in the audience and actually thank my family that are, my wife and son that are at home. What I want to say next is that Renton, like all cities, has its challenges. I mean, you see it throughout the region, there's a lot of stuff that's going on, but there's all a lot of good stuff that's going on. Renton is really set up for success in the next 10, 15 years. We're successful now. We're one of the few cities that are not out there begging for dollars for public safety bonds and other things. We're a very well-run city, very well-run, whereas we have a council that disagrees at times, but they work together to actually get things done. And having a council that is working for the residents and not for themselves is vital, vital for our future. So I just want to say thank you for all being here and I look forward to, and appreciate the honor of being mayor for the last four years and I look forward to being the mayor again for another four years.
Thanks, Armando. Ed Prince.
Thank you so much Diane, I really appreciate it. And thank, thank to all of you who actually sat through and listened to politicians speak for two hours. You all deserve a round of applause yourselves. I look at my role as the council member as this seat does not belong to me. It belongs to the community and it's, I'm inhabiting it and I get a four-year lease and every four years, the residents get to decide if they want to renew this lease. It's a public trust. Doing this job is a public trust. You know, it's not always the most thankful job, but it's one that every morning I wake up and I'm happy that I have. Renton is the center of opportunity, has been, will continue to be, and my goal when I'm re-elected is to continue to make sure that we're the center of opportunity for all of our residents. Thank you.
And Marvin.
First of all, thank you to everybody who came in. Thank you to everyone on the internet who will be tuning in and watching us, watch us tonight. First of all, I wanted to say, as you can tell here, we are the advocates. We are your cheerleaders. We are the ones that want to be able to say to the regional leaders that Renton is important because you are important and that the outcomes that we have here aren't going to be important to us in the future and for every generation that's going to come after us. So again, Renton is not Seattle. And so when we make our policies, we want to be able to tell everybody that Renton is the center of our world. You are why we make these decisions because we want to make a better Renton. And so the needs of the people are always important. And I just want to let you know, when elected, that will I have the skills to do the job? Yes. Will I have the clout with the other regional leaders in promoting Renton and its well-being to the rest of the region and to the state? Yes.
Thank you Marvin. Erica. One-minute, one-minute closing.
I was so into what Marvin was saying. Okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone for being here, to my family, to my son in Portland, I know he's going to be watching later, if he isn't, he's in trouble. I stand before you today, or to this evening, as a candidate who believes in the power of community. I believe together, we can address the pressing issues that plagues our city. I believe in the voice of the people. And so I want to be your voice on council. Enough of the same old, same old status quo, I can't do this, we can't do that, hands are tied, enough of that. When we advocate for change, anything is possible, everything is possible. So I stand before you to say, it's time for a change and that change is now. And I stand with the veterans and I stand with Mr. John Houston. I believe in Renton. Thank you.
Thank you Erica.
Vote for Erica Conway.
And Valerie.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you. I am truly humbled and honored to serve as your council member. It has been a great privilege and I believe I bring value to the council and I bring level-headedness and I am transparent and I listen and I make the best decisions that I feel are the best choice for today's Renton as well as the future of Renton. I hope I have earned your trust to continue to do the people's work for another four years. I thank you very, very kindly.
Ryan McGurbin.
Stay humble, that is what I told myself, the promise I made myself when I ran eight years ago, and I hope I've kept that promise. It's in my nature to take none of the credit and all of the blame, or at least one-seventh of the blame. I work for you and I want to keep working for you. I think I've done a pretty good job here, but if, at the end of the day, there's other opportunities and other candidates that could do some of those things, I'll still be in working for you, albeit in a different role. I believe in Renton, I'm all-in on Renton, I will bet it all on Renton because I know regardless of what combination of people we have serving on council, sitting on the stage, because some mixture of this will be it. Everyone up here believes in this community and has the best intentions to serve. So I want to close with a thanks, first to our moderator, who I think did an excellent job of keeping us on time, way better than some of those presidential debates. I want to thank all of the people who had the courage to run and sit up here on the stage, it's hard to do, so especially to our first-time candidates, thank you for keeping those of us who've held this office honest. And finally, I want to thank my family, even though red cards up, who had to go home because it's past bedtime, so they're not here anymore. And lastly, all of you for being here and paying attention, thank you.
Sanjeev.
I would like to thank you, former council member Marsha Palmer, Caroline, nonprofits to your diet, Dabson, and all the unions, including the aerospace, who represents the Boeing for endorsing me. And I also express my deep gratitude for all the respected donors. Renton is uniquely a very beautiful city and we must work together. So as I have, you know, visited over 9,000 houses, I consistently hear the same priority, it's the public safety. I also find the unifying shield in public safety and the most important job of our city leader is to ensure the safety of our residents. I also want to drive strategic planning and investments to ensure Renton remains affordable for all income housing. Everyone is looking for the effective leadership that can unite people and deliver collaborative results and solutions to the issues that we are facing. My unique background and experiences have equipped me with the valuable skills and the prospectus that I believe will serve me well as a leader in our community. And I also like to thank you, council member Ryan McGurbin, I'll take a few more minutes. He is a very good person, I always call him my friend, you know, I just let the voter, you know, decide whatever happens, but thank you again, thank you.
Sanjeev, I know you went over and Ryan said, please let him go, but to hear that approach between candidates is really heartwarming and I thank you, thank you for that. And for the general public awareness, it's been nice, Sanjeev has always said, Ryan is not my opponent, he is my friend. And so thank you for that demonstrated leadership and approach. And finally, we'll go to Kim Khan.
Thank you and thank you for organizing this event. You know, four years ago, our community gave a chance, gave me a chance, and we saw the vision for a new generation of leadership that's experienced, pragmatic, and inclusive. I want to reiterate that I'm here for all of our community members. As a refugee, this is home for me. And unfortunately, my kids aren't here and my husband's not here because we had curriculum night. But if elected, I plan to continue working for the people, making sure that we bring veterans and senior voices into the fold, making sure that Mr. John Houston and his family get the justice they deserve because of discrimination from government. I also want to let you know that I've been endorsed because I've been able to work with a lot of my colleagues and all the community members. I've been endorsed by Renton firefighters, our aerospace machinists, and MLK labor, and Democrats and Republicans alike, Congressman Adam Smith. And I will continue to look at holistic approach in governing and talking to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And finally, Randy.
Okay, I wish to thank the sponsors. It's certainly been a pleasure to be here tonight and also thank all of the candidates. It's very nice to be up with all of you. Everybody makes a difference, so thank you. I would just say that, no, I often identify problems in our community, but I'm an engineer and a consummate problem solver and that's just what I do. I love this city. My five children live here, my five grandchildren live here. I just want to take care of this city so much, in whatever role I'm in. I have a decades-long history and a very successful track record, broad support from residents and local businesses and the council and the mayor for this run. I'm endorsed by a number of people, including the Affordable Housing Council and Eastside Business Council. My focus is on Renton. I'm not going to use this job as a stepping stone, I'm going to take care of this city. That's my goal and that's what I will do for you if you elect me to this position. Thank you very much.
To that end, I again, thank the candidates, I thank the audience for being here. The presentation will be rebroadcast, we will, presentation will be rebroadcast on the Renton Chamber of Commerce YouTube channel. If you registered tonight, we will send you a link for the same, so you can review the same. Candidates, we will send you the same, so you can share, disperse, use at your will. Again, thank you to Carco Theater, thank you to Danny Smith, one of our board members, and Ashley Dobson for doing time tonight, greatly appreciated. Have a good night and don't forget to vote.